...council chairman dated June 29, 2015 regarding a bid waiver for the police ammunition. D, letter of opinion from town attorney John Frank C. to first electman dated July 13, 2015 regarding renewal for Monroe Early Learning Center LLC lease San Diego Elementary School. E, mail from town council chairman to the town clerk dated July 15, 2015 regarding a meeting postponement for town council for the September 14, 2015. There's a typographical error there, town council meeting. F, letter from legs of Columbus Committee Chair Monroe to the first electman and copy to the town council chairman dated July 16, 2015 seeking approval to place a crash on town green during Christmas. Letter of opinion from town attorney John Frank C. to first electman dated July 23, 2015 regarding friendship fund close by catalog contract. H, letter from town of Monroe Labor Attorney dated 9 to the first electman dated July 23, 2015 regarding marriage legal contract Monroe chapter 136-1, local 136 IFTTP. I, letter from the town of Monroe Labor Attorney dated 9 to the first electman dated July 24, 2015 regarding supervisors union local EOMP OF Council number 4, A F S C M D. Moving on to public participation, and I'm just the public who's to participate this evening. All right, seeing none on public participation, there are no appointments this evening. Agenda item seven, action items, town council committee on financing, health, and public safety matters, Ms. Hahn.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. We have not met with Board of Education, they are waiting for their bids for the tutorials to come in, which should be in August, and the other thing was they set their schedule for the, um, meeting schedule for the next six months. They're meeting once a month, like we are also for the summer, and their next meeting will until, uh, third of August. For Board of Finance, Matt, uh, they approved this, the garden plan, which we approved last time for the senior center. They also approved the upgrades that they're seeing tonight for the technology for the council chambers. They heard the presentation that we are also going to see tonight for the later Bridgeport Regional Council for the G I S, EMS facility work group, uh, they, uh, for the study, they approved, uh, $30,000 coming out of contingency for that study. They also approved the transfer for the budget for, operating budget for to the police grant fund. And the other thing is they were talking about the honeyway, uh, honeywell phase two, and they want to have a meeting, a joint meeting with the town council and Board of Finance at that time in September or October discussing that. Uh, they also discussed the, um, that there was no vehicles available for the health director. We thought we were going to be getting some of this stuff from the district, and we're not, so they are, were talking about some type of funding to go and get that, and also I think that was it.
Do you have a meeting scheduled for your next meeting today?
Not as yet, we've got to get together with my committee. Um, can I report to, uh, hand for EMS and Board of Health?
Thank you. Uh, I believe the Board of Health has had a meeting since our last council meeting. Um, for agenda, there's a couple of matters that need to discuss tonight. Uh, as far as we've asked, they did have a regular meeting, um, since we've matched, I will say one item, um, that will be coming to us, uh, hopefully in the near future is the job description for the part-time EMS administrator. They are actively deliberating on that. Um, they're having a meeting, uh, this week, uh, which I expect that they will be, um, working further on that. I don't know if it will be, um, I mean, obviously it still needs to be worked, you know, worked with the charge director and, uh, you know, offering the way out, but hopefully it will be at a point where it can get to LNA and to council, um, you know, relatively soon. Sorry, the nicer woods. Right for our next meeting, I'm not sure if we'll be there or if we'll be able to pass that, but it's, uh, is being worked on after the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kellag, anything further, Ms. Hahn?
That is it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the town council committee on planning and zoning, public works, and marks for recreation matters, Mr. Orks.
Um, our subcommittee has not met since our last meeting. Part two ranked, uh, had a meeting on the 20th, I was unable to attend, uh, held a minute, uh, two minutes of that meeting to be able to present, uh, for our next session. And, uh, public.
Yeah, planning and zoning is meeting this Thursday evening on a couple of agenda items that we'd actually voted on in the budget, Wolf Park, whoever, so I'm going to attend that meeting, Mr. Chairman, and I will come back the next week.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I was, um, town.
Is there a date for your next meeting, Mr. Orks?
Uh, no, we haven't said, uh, I mean, we'll get to that.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to C, town council committee on legislative and administrative matters, Mr. Bellows.
We just met, met on Friday, I believe, and the first thing we discussed was, um, Mr. Kepoor would like us to, uh, review the board of ethics policy. So I believe that Mrs. Barton and Mr. Lido will be doing that this week. Then we discussed the Monroe Early Learning Center, which is coming up tonight, lease. Uh, we discussed the town of Monroe friendship fund agreement, the close by catalog, which is coming out tonight, and then we went on to discuss a few other things.
Good. Excuse me, would you pass on to, Mr. Allen? You have my copy? Uh, for the record, uh, the next LNA meeting, as Mr. Bellows pointed out, is at 4:00 P.M. this Wednesday, July 29, and we will be discussing the review, revisions to the board of ethics policy. Uh, moving on to item D, trouble Monroe Health District, Mr. Hahn, anything on that?
Oh, yeah. We did meet, uh, two weeks ago. We thought we had a finalized agreement, but now the attorneys are looking for a final budget statement, which we've already told them won't be until the end of this month. We do have some outstanding small bills to be paid, but TD Bank, because the article that was in the newspaper, has frozen all our accounts, so we cannot touch anything that's in the accounts nor transfer anything. We've had, to my knowledge, three checks that have bounced already because there wasn't enough money in the checking to cover. There is money in other accounts that could have been transferred, but there was no staff there to do it. So, our next meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00 P.M.
Okay, I have a few questions for you, Ms. Hahn. The, uh, has there been ongoing negotiations between the Health District and the towns of Trumbull Monroe?
Yes, sir.
And in your opinion, could?
I, I have no knowledge. Let me put this way, the Health District's attorney was out of country all last week, and he just got back tonight.
Okay.
Uh, so nothing could be done, Patrice is not involved at all, the ex-health director. And in essence, it's Dr. Moise and I who are doing all the labor as far as organizing meetings, trying to get a forum together, and it's a little difficult because the majority of the board directors that were from Trumbull are now on the local Trumbull Health Board. So, either they're being told not to come, or they're waiting for something. We do have a board for the long term.
Where is, where is the board operating? Where is the Health District operating at this point?
We are having our meetings at the Health District.
We still are legally entitled to occupy the space that?
Yeah, we, we had to, because all the furniture is still there, the cars are still on site, nothing has been done with anything. We're waiting for a finalization from the attorneys for the green. I can't make this thing happen. It's frustrating to Dr. Moise and myself.
I don't want to get into too much detail, but I think I'm concerned about some of your statements that, especially in public, that, uh, there's checks that are bouncing on behalf of the district and that because of the newspaper article that TD froze the accounts.
Well, that's what, that's what TD, I'm just only, what TD Bank told us.
Without getting into detail, it's my understanding that there was a number of discussions between the respective towns of Trumbull Monroe and the Health District Board, all of which could have prevented everything that you just said, and that the plan that was proposed by, joint plan by Trumbull Monroe was actually rejected by the, the Health District Board, is that not correct?
Not by the full board, it was.
It wasn't accepted?
By the full board, it was. And it went back to the attorneys because they wanted the finalization of their numbers.
I'm talking, I'm talking about prior to that, that's a second, that was a subsequent agreement, wasn't there, the proposal before that? That was just how.
That went to the executive, the full board elected a three-member executive board, and we were criticized for having that meeting with just three members. So then we had another meeting with the full board, and that full board, there were no attorneys present, the only one that was present was the first, first electman of Trumbull's, uh, spokesperson.
Okay.
And she seemed happy about everything, walking out, but then we got this notification that, uh, they want this down and that, and.
But originally that offer was rejected, correct? And that was, and that was before the article was published?
Right, because, yes, you're right in that, I'll agree to that.
Okay.
Because we had no money to pay off, but we had negotiated with the landlord, we had gotten that number way down, we had negotiated with everyone. And again, Patrice isn't there, Paul and I don't know other than what room everything is in, and there is absolutely no staff there.
I certainly, I think, speak for everybody on council, I appreciate your extraordinary efforts, you and Mr. Moise, who's present this evening, and I don't think anybody is discounting what you've done in your, uh, your town, town of Monroe, to try to wind things up, but I do get concerned that we get proper information out there to those.
Could it not be proper information?
Now, we've had a full discussion of your report, I thought was, uh, could have been misinterpreted, and I just want to make sure that the record is.
I just wanted to be plain and straight so people know where we speak.
Okay, fair enough. Any, any questions for Mr. Hahn? Ms. Martin?
Well, I don't know if it's for Mr. Hahn or, um, can, can, um, did, I guess, but can TD Bank raise assets?
Of course they can.
They can?
They can, no.
I would imagine they're, facility or whatever, they're entitled to under the instruments.
Legally, they can. If they could, we would have done something about it. I believe Dr. Moise will speak of that in public discussion. That's the end of my important.
Further questions for? Mr. Hahn? Did, did either of the towns ever suggest to the Health District that TD, the TD loan be paid in full?
My knowledge, well, but no, and I'm not saying they didn't, I've said to my knowledge.
Okay.
I want to be explicit on that.
Any further questions? We'll move on. Uh, Mr. Baber, update?
Yes, um, and Mr. Hahn, thank you for your input there. I'm not going to discuss anything that's going on between employers right now, but I can tell you that, as you know, our health department was up and running a month ago, and as you all heard today, Trumbull's just opened today. Uh, I think that's a tremendous feather in everybody here's cap, Mr. Condon, Mr. Kellag. Uh, this council has done a great job getting the department up and running. Uh, you're going to be discussing a few things later on tonight, and that is going to help that out. You're also going to see tonight, uh, I want to, special shout out to Ron Bonowski, Kathy Lombardi, and Dave Ryan. As you guys heard tonight, that the two contracts you're going to see before you, uh, actually took a grand total of nine hours between the two of them. Uh, that's pretty unheard of. We've taken pretty much all the combatness and the negativity out of these union negotiations. A four to five hour, uh, discussion, I felt was pretty good. We all feel this is a good contract moving forward to help our employees gain a bit more, and there's more to come. I want to thank Chairman Lido for, for bringing up some things, um, that we've been looking into, making it more transparent, making things go easier, but I, I want to commend our employees, our employee unions for helping us out and seeing the environment and the economy that we're in. Uh, you are going to see out here that we are going to have a crash on our town green during Christmas season, uh, the nice Columbus, uh, since we have a, a, um.
It's cold in the door.
Monroe, thank you, sorry, I just couldn't think of your name. Um, sorry about that. Uh, since we have Monroe and here Christmas tree, they wanted a crash, and I feel that it's, it's all religion, yes?
Um, they say on the green, but the green is owned by the churches, is it going to be on?
No, it's going to be on our, on our.
That's, I, I just, when I saw that, I was, because I wanted to make sure it was on our, not on somebody else's.
No. And other than that, you've seen that we've had a pretty busy summer, and hopefully everything you see tonight, you'll agree with, I think, I'm going to thank right up front Jack Samory for everything he's put together, I think he's here, tremendous presentation tonight, and, um, other than that, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Baber? Taking a note of the question, I have any questions for? Uh, Mr. Baber, I have one question, the, uh, we have two bid waivers as part of our package again this evening, and I know that, um, your office is working on revising the purchasing policy that incorporates the bid waivers, and, uh, is that, is that far along where one of our subcommittees is looking at that or insisting with that?
I'm going to defer to my.
The answer is no, not at this point.
Okay, do we have an anticipated period of time where you think that would be, that it will, I'm not saying complete, uh, you know?
Pro, I'm, I'm thinking the end of August or September.
And, and the reason why I'm suggesting is, LNA is certainly willing to help with that process, so it doesn't have to be, you know, a, a present that's bow tied and ready to go, so if you want assistance, please let us know, and we'd be happy to look into it.
Just so you know too, and I appreciate the question, um, I did write one myself off of best practices, and we looked at it, and then we, we saw Fairfield's, which this lady, I don't know, I forgot her last name, it was Twig's last name?
Twig, huh?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Um, her, her town, I know this is a lot, like we want to be, in my mind, I was using New Towns and a few other people's hybrids, but when I showed it to Ron, he goes, you know, now that he's getting his feel in there, he goes, let's talk to this lady Twig, who's like the dean of writing of these things in this area. So, uh, would you, you just rank up that much more as that's the delay there?
All right, fair enough, I don't want to get into too much detail, I just, uh, one of the, I'm finding both of these, personally, I'm finding both of these bid waivers, I think they're appropriate. The one for ammunition certainly is, my opinion, more appropriate than the radio equipment purchase, and the reason why I say that is, again, we're talking about using state bids, and I just want to make sure that we get out ahead of defining the state bid threshold, and, and it has a full discussion on council and certainly finance, to be sure that we all think that just being a state bid list makes it appropriate for bid waiver, and I just, you know, I want to move that process forward so we don't have this problem.
And like I said, we, we've always done this favor, and I'm sure we have to do it that way, to make sure it's best for all of us, I agree.
Understood. Any further questions? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to unfinished business. Uh, Monroe Local Health is the only head of LNA, Mr. Kellag, do you have anything?
Yes, I do, thank you, Chairman. Um, I just wanted to, first of all, just, I'll, I'll thank, uh, Mr. Baber, first electman, for acknowledging the hard work that's been done, certainly not, um, not simply on behalf of myself, but that is common, our chairman of our board of health, all the board of health members, HR director, uh, Mr. Bonowski, there's been several people that have been involved in getting this up and running. Um, one individual in particular, um, we wanted to formally acknowledge, uh, early on this process, we were still in transition, uh, we had, we as the town had reached out to the Newtown Health District, uh, and Mr. Baber had also spoken to Newtown First Electman, um, in regards to getting some, um, assistance from, from their director of health in a consultative fashion. Um, we wanted to thank her for her efforts, uh, I think, I'll just quickly read the letter, uh, be the fastest way to go for this. Uh, it's addressed to the chairman of the Newtown Health District, excuse me, which is, uh, Dr. Robert Grossman. It reads, as you'll recall, several months ago, the town of Monroe met with you and your director of health, Ms. Donna M. Colbert, to discuss how Monroe might receive assistance as we work to establish our own municipal health department. Since that meeting, Ms. Colbert has offered her time and expertise to our new board of health, helping us to establish direction, departmental structure, and provide operational guidance. Her scope, our support was broad in scope and included attending meetings after regular business hours. After we secured an interim director of health, Ms. Colbert continued to follow up on operational details and contributed greatly toward our smooth startup. We are fortunate to have such a good neighbor, the Newtown Health District, and the professionalism and generosity of Ms. Colbert. On behalf of town Monroe, we offer our most sincere thanks and gratitude, and it is, uh, will be signed by first electman, uh, myself, Mr. Lido, and, uh, Mr. Condon.
Anything further, Mr. Bon?
No, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, the, the Newtown Health District certainly, um, we, we would have certainly entertained, uh, a financial arrangement for the services that it provided, she, she did, uh, spend considerable time in meetings, and, uh, it was certainly offered in the outset, that we had anticipated those costs, um, I, I'd like to acknowledge that the response I received was that they believe, um, the, the assistance they provided was in the spirit of being a good neighbor, and, uh, I think that speaks fine to that.
Any questions of, uh, Mr. Don?
I just have a, a quick question. Mr. Bon, you said last time that with the one veterinarian in place, that inspections were being done as best they can be, do you have any stat, I mean, um, how, how are we doing on that? I mean, are we falling behind, or?
You have a, you have a valid question. Uh, I don't have any current metrics, um, I don't, you know, given that they've started, uh, they started July 1st, um, the next board of health meeting is tomorrow, I believe, or a week from tomorrow? A week from tomorrow, I'm sorry, a week from tomorrow, so, uh, I'm assuming that the board will ask for some metrics in that regard, so we can see how we do it. Um, I know the board is actively trying to ensure that, um, the, you know, the regulatory work is being done, um, and they're trying to impress that expeditiously, so.
You, you also had mentioned that at, at some point, if necessary, we would, we as the town, the board of health would consider bringing in some people on a temporary basis or from another community, is that still in discussion?
I believe the board is discussing a few options as we transition from the interim or acting director towards a full-time director, so I think some of it is still fluid, um, but that is certainly on the table if, if needed.
Any further questions, Mr. Kellag? Um, I, I just wanted to bring everybody's attention that I did discuss the letter, Mr. Kellag, I want to thank Mr. Kellag for drafting the letter, um, I did discuss the letter with LNA, I think it was appropriate to have a full, full of council, but I wanted council to be aware of letters that do go out, if, if these might be one of the chairmen or the entire council, so I, I wanted to just make sure no one had any problems with the letter or had any comments the letter report goes out, and I sign that behalf of the council. Appreciate that. Hold on, no comments? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Kellag. Moving on to our new business, item A, the health director job description slash pay scale level, Mr. Bellows, is there a motion?
Yep, I make a motion to approve the health director job description pay scale, non-union pay scale, level nine.
Motion by Mr. Bellows, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hahn. Uh, essentially, um, this agenda item, we had approved the job description for the health director previously, um, the job has been posted, there's not, has not been a pay scale, a non-union pay scale level assigned to the position, which would give the position a salary range. Uh, Ms. Lombardi suggested a received pay scale nine, which is eighty-five thousand to ninety-five thousand on our current pay scale. Uh, that was her suggestion, that is what is being proposed, and it's certainly subject to, uh, discussion and comment, so I'll take, uh, any discussion, anybody who wants to speak on this issue, of course, can.
Is it possible for us to get a copy of the nine pay scale?
Absolutely. Uh, I will make sure that it is sent out to you, I, most of the less I've seen it, maybe we have, yeah, so I will, I believe it was last approved in 2008.
Does, I mean, so you're probably going to check through your minutes, when you write it, it hasn't changed since then?
I will make sure Ms. Lombardi gets it out, it's not going to change it. Uh, any further comments on, on this particular motion?
I'll, I'll just say that I would support this, I think it's the appropriate range for position.
Thank you, Mr. Bon.
Do we have any idea what the range is for other communities, similar charges, size?
Mr. Kellag?
We, uh, we do, there is, uh, actually, our, our HR director had done some work on that, I believe, the, Mr. Condon might be, uh, available to provide some information on that further, if you'd like to.
We do. Um, for similar-sized towns, where, actually, when you looked at how we developed the salary range, it's probably in line with the state average, but it's roughly out of range for a county. Even the smallest communities are way of including, yeah, Trumbull's a couple of people and more, more sites, but, um, your suggestion and your change is valid, that's for sure. Do you want, do you want actual ranges, actual counts?
No, just a, we're low.
We are very low, like, um, you know, again, when you looked at, we basically looked at 2013 data, that was statewide, now, when you look at specifically for Fayetteville County, uh, neighbors, we are, yeah, half a second off.
Further, Mr. Condon is the chairman of the board of health committee, in that capacity, this is the cause for this discussion to settle. Uh, any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of this motion? And again, motion carries nine to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Condon and Mr. Kellag. Uh, moving on to, uh, new business, item B, emergency medical services facility agreement. This agenda item is not ready to be voted on, but I believe that, uh, Mr. Kellag was working on this through the subcommittee, and he may have an update on us as to where we stand, so, Mr. Kellag, if you'd like to listen.
Thank you, yes, the, uh, work group is working on finalizing the, uh, the consulting agreement with, uh, Jacuzzi Hughes, uh, as we had reported previously, um, the work group will, I hope to finalize their input, uh, in the very near future, perhaps next week, we're trying to arrange a special meeting, uh, and it is currently also in the hands of the town attorney, seeking his input as well, so, uh, I fully would intend that, uh, this will be ready for the next council meeting to be, uh, reviewed.
And for the record, the, um, the contract amount of $25,000 was approved with a $5,000 contingency, so $12,000, $30,000 approved by board of finance at their last meeting, and the funds have been allocated to be expected from the contingency line item for the time being. All right, any further comment on that? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the new business, item C, Monroe Early Learning Center LLC lease at John Hill, Mr. Bellows.
I move to approve, adopt, and authorize the first electman to execute the debt we have in Monroe, lease agreement. of the Town of Monroe, the lease agreement between the Monroe Early Learning Center LLC Dash, our building, and the Town of Monroe.
Motion by Mr. Bellis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hahn. For discussion in your packet is the Town Attorney's Opinion Letter and a copy of the lease. LNA did review both the opinion letter and the lease. It also includes a letter from Attorney David Brogdon, who's the Attorney for the Town of Newtown, who was actually in control of the building for their elementary school, so he did issue an opinion letter that says there were objections to renewal. Essentially, this is a renewal of the lease, and they had a specific package here, but they actually advised the Town of Monroe that they wanted to extend the lease, and they do that. So a new lease will be potentially reusable at the expiration of this lease, which is October 3, 2016. Comments, discussion, questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Against, motion carries nine to zero. Thank you, moving on to new business, item D, Town of Monroe Friendship Fund Agreement with Close By, Ms. Bellis.
You, I thought you.
Before we, we'll make a motion, but before we make the motion, Ms. Jaeger, we discussed this in LNA as well. If anybody had interviewed the minutes, they would see the comments that were made. Essentially, there was some concern in LNA about the presentation of this particular program, call it, and LNA just wanted some assurances from Ms. Jaeger and the company that the appropriate message was being delivered to any potential consumers, residents of the town, as to where the funds were going. And the only in LNA was to endorse the agreement with the caveat that, or the directive, I think is how we stated it, Ms. Martin said it, the directive, that the LNA would ensure, should the council want to move forward with this this evening, especially in light of the fact that we're not meeting for another month, LNA is willing to ensure that we review any potential directive, whether it be an electronic directive or a written directive, so that we can ensure that the proper message is being sent to any consumers, especially citizens of the town, so that we're not going to fall for it. So I think before we call for a motion, maybe behind Ms. Jaeger, fill us in on the particulars. We have the contract, Ms. Jaeger, you have the Town Attorney's Opinion Letter. I don't think any of that's our concern, unless someone has been said of the particulars of the contract. Please let me know, we can discuss that, but I think if you could just tell us more about the program itself, what the intention is, I think it'd be helpful.
Well, the Close By catalog originally started as fundraising for schools in Maine. It was in response to many graphic paper, chocolate bar kind of things, cheap things. So they started the catalog using crap items made in America, things that were local. They've now expanded, they have companies in Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New York that sell items in there.
Okay.
The fundraising entity is that the Town of Monroe receives 30% of all sales. The vendor, whoever it is that makes the item, receives 50%, and the Close By catalog makes 20% in order to put it all together. In our case, we're not going to run it like a school, everything is online. Some people will go online, they'll pick out what they want, they'll pay for it, it's shipped directly to them. We're not going to be involved in shipping and delivery or any of that. So it's a little different that way. So basically, we're not going to be doing any kind of legwork, we're not putting out any money, it's strictly online.
How are members or existent of the Town appraised on this website or program?
Well, we'll probably do mostly through social media, email, just getting word out with suppliers and things, but most of that is going to be done that way.
Okay, and how do you propose, how do you explain what benefit the consumer is giving to the Town of Monroe in those advertisements?
Well, the, all the funds that is our base, 30% goes into the Friendship Fund, which is basically our social services. It's our overflow account, we have Project Warms, we have the Food Pantry, we have other ones that are very specific. Friendship Fund is much broader, and usually we use it for the holiday program, when we don't have enough money from the community to make up the difference in gifts. We use it for the back-to-school program, to fill the backpacks, and then if we have any money left over, we use it as apartment discretion to help people with repair bills or some other items that they might need, or to keep their head above water.
Has this been presented to Finance yet?
Well, we started this process in 2013, and at that time, I made a presentation then, and the Attorney, Frac Assini, said that he would go over the contract. Unfortunately, it's taken this long for him to review it, so it's never gone to Board Finance, because we've never really gotten out of this form.
If I recall from our discussion in LNA, we were in support of the program, and I'm sorry that it's taken so long, it seems like somewhat of a simple thing, but our concern was just that the Monroe consumer know what percentage of the profits were going to the Town of Monroe. So if I go onto the website, maybe I, you know, read it in the newsletter or something, and I go on the website, will it say, will there be that breakdown that you just gave us, about 50% to here, 30% to there, 20%?
Well, I think it will be that 30% of all the profits will come, will go to the Friendship Fund.
Okay.
But I can add the other, but that was basically our.
It was, it was what was going to the Town of Monroe that was our concern, and at least personally, if you could assure us that that would be stated when a consumer goes to this website, I'm perfectly comfortable with it. That was our concern, I think.
Right, that's what I said. I mean, I think that's important. I've actually got to do it for any other fundraiser, but in this particular case, because it's all online, that we would definitely say that 30% is going to that.
Yeah, I, you know, I would hate to have a resident think that if they bought from this, 100% of it was going to the town. This way, they know they made that educated decision.
Ms. Kansky?
This is the first time I read about it when I got the packet, and I don't really fully understand the program, but we are giving our stamp of approval, and I was just wondering, do you know what the track record is for somebody who purchases with this and with the vendor, and they're not satisfied? Do they have a good track record of accommodating the?
Yes, I mean, Close By has one multiple awards within the state of Maine. They recently, the last year or so, have franchised out into other states, but it's definitely a very well-run company. Very familiar with it, my family lives in Maine, I ordered from it myself, through them, and we've never had any problem, all the items are high-quality, and there's never been a problem. I haven't seen any negative reviews. I'm sure there's somebody out there that was not happy.
Yeah, but on the whole.
On the whole, it's very well-run.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Ms. Kansky asked my question, so thank you.
Mr. Martin, just so I'm clear, does each town or each recipient have its own website? There'll be a specific link in social media? It's not like we're going to just Close By's website, is there a code you put in? How do you get Monroe, how does Monroe get credit for the purchase?
Well, they would have to put in a code when they, when they go out and they buy something, they would have to put in the Monroe Friendship Fund code, they would be assigned a code, so that would have to go in there, so we would receive credit. So that's why we need some kind of informational packet going out, so people know they have to put that code in there.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, Ms. Martin's comment was, when one goes to the site, I'm not going to say anything about the Town of Monroe, and how much of the product goes to the Town of Monroe, now, absent that code, it's just a, it's just a vendor site, correct?
Well, it's the Close By catalog, so the vendors are in the catalog.
Okay. But absent, absent putting the code in?
I mean, I think they would probably question, you know, a customer, if they did put a code in, where they intended that money to go to.
So you're saying like an article will go out, or a newsletter or something, is saying, oh, it's just going to the town?
Yes, we'll have to explain the entire program.
Right, right, right.
But it's not a senior center program. Right, it's a social service program.
It's much clearer now than it was when we discussed it, it was Friday, that'll be in LNA.
So, yeah, again, our concern was just that we would approve the contract, but there must be a directive, that some of you are already doing it, that explains that mechanism of the cost, the benefits of the town, and how that person's supporting the town, they should buy a major purchase. I'm okay with that. Any other comments? All right, so at this point, are we ready for a motion, Mr. Baber?
I take the motion to approve, adopt, and authorize the First Selectmen to execute on behalf of the Town of Monroe, the Friendship Fund Close By catalog contract, providing it is cleared to purchaser, how much of these funds are being distributed to the town?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin, is there any further discussion? Twenty minutes to be spent, not too long. All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries nine to zero.
Can I add a point of clarification?
Yes.
You want me to send you the, I don't like your.
It would be appreciated.
The pamphlet, whatever we're going to send now.
If you could, I will, LNA said that they would look at it, and I'd be happy to. I would like to share that with the council.
And do you feel that I should go to Board Finance?
I will leave that up to you, because we don't discuss numbers very often when we do, and we listen to very much, but I would suggest, I think it's always a good idea to make sure that the funding element of the town, related officials that do that, are approving the concept as well, and that, you know, the mechanism for where the money goes is appropriate, I would do that. Thank you. Moving on to item E, Proposal to Expand Funds for the Camillia Rogers Fund for Technology Upgrades in the Town Council Chambers, very motion?
My motion first, please.
Sure.
I move to approve the proposal to expand funds for the Camillia Rogers Fund, the technology upgrades in the Monroe Town Council Chambers.
Motion by Mr. Bellis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Martin. Discussion, as part of our packet, as always, when Mr. Zambra is involved in something, we have a wonderfully colorful presentation and video presentation. Mr. Zambra is present, so let me take us through this, Mr. Zambra.
Sure, I'll just walk you through what's in the design here, starting from the back of the room, permanently installed video on the back wall. One of the things we have to contend with in this room is the ceiling. We can't, we can't touch the ceiling because of the confines within it. So we mount the projector, or the video camera in the back, and that would be led into the PA rack in the back of the room, right behind you, so we gather audio and video all into one chip, that would then be uploaded onto YouTube for access of any meetings at any point in time. For projection, we mount a projector, just above the window over here, for projection onto the wall, permanently mounted, so that anytime anyone wants to come into this room and project, all they need to do is plug into connectors that will be mounted right here. We'll have HDMI, VGA, as well as analog audio, so it's good for the current technology as well as those that are transitioning to HDMI as well. Just to let people know, when you're, when you do renovation, you do have to add what's called wire mold, places to burn the wire. When you do new construction, you can bury it behind the wall, unfortunately, in retrofit we can't, so there wouldn't be wire mold on the floor to channel the wires where we need to. Included in the quote is the equipment that you see here, plus, we do need an electrician to come in and do some of the wiring for the 110 volts. And then last thing is the 10 Chromebooks to make meetings wireless. The rack is already there with outlets, we had town maintenance staff create that, so it's already ready to go to housing charges, Chromebooks, if you choose to move ahead with this purchase.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zambra, are there any questions? Obviously, we've had many discussions here, more complaining than discussions about how we were technologically dinosaurs, and how it would be very helpful not to have as much paper to be able to access for our markets, so I think this is going to really, really, really help not only us, but anybody who is using this, this particular, or if they find it, they find themselves wanting to be in here more, who knows? But it really is a great help, I really appreciate it a lot, so seeing, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Against, motion carries eight to zero, just know for the reason Ms. Martin had to step out, so she led the motion. Mr. Zambra, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're very excited. New business F, the GIS, GBRC, Town Uses and Funding. I don't believe that there's another presentation, I don't think we have to have a motion on this this evening. Is there any comment on this, Mr. Zambra, are you working on this?
Yeah, if I could just walk you through the presentation, keep you informed about what's going on, this is ongoing work with the Great Bridge Port Resource Council, I gave this same presentation to Board of Finance, one of the general town councils.
Regional.
Regional, thank you, second time I made a mistake, that's where I located, to make sure, Great Bridge Port Regional Council. So just, first of all, what is GIS? It's a geographic information system, and what it does is it takes the real world and represents it in a bunch of digital layers. So one of the layers you'll see tonight is imagery. There's an airplane that's sent over the entire Town of Monroe, gets tremendous detail of all of the property within the Town of Monroe, down to inches of detail, of every parcel that the town owns, that the residents own. It also has other layers that include maps showing property lines, showing how, where the dwelling is relative to the property lines. FEMA has their own layers. There's, it's pretty much limitless, people continue to add these layers to represent various important features related to our town and even the state. So how are we using GIS right now in Monroe? We're using it extensively for land records. As a matter of fact, I was in the Land Use Department tonight, and one of the things the staff was saying to me at this point, we've only been using this for, geez, a little under a year, and they're telling me that they're using it so intensely that they can't, they can't do their jobs without it at this point. You'll see some of the reasons why in a moment. So some of the ways that it's being used within land records is planning and zoning records, building information, tax assessment, conservation, and managing town property. Some of the things we're working on for future use, we're looking at some uses for public works, including things like asset management, keeping track of what street signs we have, what condition they're in, catch basins, various assets of those types. We're also doing some work on emergency operations, which I'm going to show you some details about. The Town of Trumbull and a few other towns are doing some interesting things with vehicle location. They actually can see their vehicles within the town. Some of the towns are actually, the Newtown trucks are shipping with data points on the trucks, and they can actually not only see where the truck is, but they can see if the sander is on or off, they can see how much sand is coming out, what rate of sanding is going on, and they can see if the plow is up or down. Some have even gone to the extent of controlling those things. So as the truck goes by intersections, and if they want more salt, it will automatically ramp up based on the location of the vehicle to a higher salt rate. When it leaves the intersection, it ramps down to a lower salt rate. So it's got a lot of pretty powerful and amazing features.
And it's done automatically?
It's done by the location, yeah, all through the system, knowing where it is, where the truck is, and then feeding that digital data back to the vehicle. So on our site, we have a link to it, to GIS, and just so you know, you have to use Internet Explorer right now to use it, it needs Silverlight as a plugin. By October, that's going to change, so it can be used on any browser at all. But I'll just give you a quick look at some of the things it can do. The main menu is this one up top here that says "I Want To," and you can search any property in the town by owner or address. So right now, we're just going to go to where we are, and as soon as you start to type in an address, it searches the database and will come up with related addresses that fit what you're typing in. So we're going to go to 7 Vanham Road, where we are, Town Hall. I can zoom into that feature. Now, with the layers, this is a layer you see right now that shows in graphics the layout of Town Hall. If I want to add another layer, I go up top here where all my layers are, I can go to the imagery, and now I get both. I get the satellite imagery, or actually, the imagery off the airplane when it came over and ran the grid to get the photo that you see, plus overlaying on top of that are the boundaries included as well. I can also go to the field card, and the field card provides all And the field card provides all pertinent data on the property. This is true for all properties in the town of Monroe and all properties within Greater Bridgeport Resource Council and quite honestly, most towns in the state have this. Regional, thank you. Just testing. So everything's listed in there, all the assessor data, even the property information about the structure itself. How many square feet are there? Specifics about what kinds of attributes are available, things like bathrooms, things of that nature. So all that's there currently for every parcel within the town. And you can see why land use is using this extensively right now. From the land use side, they also have tools to measure. So if somebody wants to come in and get a permit right now, it's not a legal measurement, but they can get a good approximation. They can see, you know, is the setback conforming or not? If it's within a few feet or ten feet, you know, it's reasonable. If it's close, they'll give you an assessor involved. But without going out to the parcel, they can conduct that kind of business, which is a time saver. Another story for you here about emergency operations. The, remember Sandy during 2012, we had a lot of property damage that went on. Emergency operations were set up within every town in the state within Monroe, like many. We had a paper map on the wall and that paper map looked a lot like this one with pushpins showing various things that were problems in the town, down trees, down telephone poles, road closures, et cetera. All that information would come in via cell phone or walkie talkie, whatever was available. And you think about it, if you've got a down pole, there's typically a tree down as well, there's typically a road closure. So you have multiple services involved. You have the police involved, you have D P W involved, you have Connecticut Light and Power, non-affected sources involved. And if there's a fire with a transformer, you have the fire department involved. So you have at least four agencies involved. It was a very inefficient system. You had to have four different agencies involved to say, was the fire put out? Was the tree taken care of? Was the pole taken care of by EverSource?
If I could too, because I asked you to change this at the fires meeting. That map, as you seize it, now think of it with all types of different road closures or trees down with different crayons. There's no excuse to go with crayons to do everything. As you circle it, it was done. So the pins would show locations and that whole map would be colored on a bunch of different things. And it took a while for it to really be coordinated, so.
It was really very, very inefficient. A lot of wasted time, people having to go and look and see what the status was, none of it real time. So one of the things that's in the works, in large part due to staff in Monroe working closely with G B R C. They've been very responsive to our requests, is there is a emergency operations layer in development, secure layer, only, that will only be accessible by those services that need to have access. So rather than having that paper map up in the new emergency operations room, in the police department, we have a smart board there, a projection of the G I S mapping system will be up. And it will be a push pin that's in real time. So if D P W goes out there and you see that there's a pole down, a tree down, and the road needs to be closed, they put that information up there for all three different services. All the services see that in real time. Everything happens in, you know, as it's occurring. And similarly with updates, we see all that in real time. So that's what we're working to get to next is the next feature. We're very excited about it because all the G B R C towns share the same maps. So when we share resources, like if the fire department comes in from Trumbull or vice versa, they're not having to learn a new mapping system. It's the same mapping system from town to town, which really makes for better safety and efficiency. Related to this, Next Gen is one of the largest police software developers in the state. We met with them and they've agreed to change their maps over to the current G B R C maps. This was a big deal because again, now the police departments in G B R C will be using the same mapping as we have, you know, towns help out each other, nobody needs to learn a new map. It's all the same look and feel as they go from town to town. So that's in the works right now, should be, might even be finished. If it's not finished now, it will be in the coming weeks. Another key conversation we've had is with fire departments as well. We've talked with their software developer about also using this information. The water company, Aquarian, has given all of their fire hydrant data to G I S, G B R C. So that's already in there and we've said, look, it's all, you know, survey ready. So survey grade points and they haven't committed to it yet, but it was a very good discussion and I'm hopeful that over time they'll be integrating into this as well. Vehicle location, as I mentioned before, this is a representation of some of the mapping currently being used by some of the G B R C member towns. Shows you points where vehicles are, different colors for different types of vehicles. This technology already exists with the Monroe Police Department, but it's secure. Only the police department can see it. And again, these layers are very beneficial in providing the information that people need to know and not more. So it is, again, in the emergency operations component in particular, you can see where assets are. If there's a tree down and you've got a D P W truck only two streets away, no accident to be able to say, that's the truck I want to have go there, as opposed to calling everybody up on the radio and wondering where they are. That guesswork gets eliminated. We have another flight coming up in 2016. The imagery that you just saw a moment ago was from a flight last year. The state of Connecticut is paying for the next flight in 2016. The frequency of the flights is important because it shows changes over time. Yes, it is Big Brother. There is that element to it because, you know, there is, the reality of, you know, our, our properties are taxed based on what's there. So if somebody puts an addition up without permitting, that becomes very obvious as these images develop over time. You can compare an image from 2013, 2016 and see what has occurred over time. That's part of, part of the reality of this. The other part is you need current information. If there's a shopping mall that goes up, for first responders who are using this now, they need to see accurate information. If the map is three years old and they're responding to something that's not visible in the map, the mapping's no, it serves no purpose. So this constant updating is a really, really important facet of making this relevant and beneficial to everybody that uses it.
At that point too, you all remember that fire that burnt down the Holy Gallow with gun range. The reason it took so long is because there was a room there that wasn't in our plans and nobody knew it was there. They had to actually, until they heard everything, that's when they found this would have eliminated that, maybe saved the building a little bit.
G B R C deserves a lot of credit for some very good work in developing this resource and also the funding mechanisms they've used to fund it so far. The, the work that's been done to date has come with no cost to the town of Monroe. It's been done through various grants that they've written. The other thing that they're doing is they're working with community capital fund. Again, Steve, what specifically, is that fund another consortium?
Consortium, yeah.
Of municipalities.
Right.
They're also working with nonprofits, they're working with the towns. We're a member and a partner in this work. The other thing that's in the works, as I mentioned before, is Aquarian has already started providing information. Their partners, EverSource, has started to come on board with this. Where ultimately we'll have telephone poles located in these maps. Again, it needs to be secure. That's not information you want to share with everybody about what kind of assets are out there. But again, very critical when we get into emergency operation situations and thunderstorms and when these assets start to go bad, you need to be able to identify where they are and how you're going to address issues that are out in the field.
For example, EverSource, that flash storm we just had when brand new, you're speaking, Frank. When it had to get shut down, Moose Hill Road had to shut down. If EverSource would have had, been on board for this, they would have known that their wire went down and it took two hours to respond. So we were telling them right in front, but they didn't see it on the air thing. This, this would have definitely helped Turkey Moose Road.
And that's part of why we're, yeah, that's why we're pushing these utilities to become members of this work. Is again, if we're all using the same data, there's less opportunity for errors and less inefficiencies. Another really important part of this work, again, that G B R C deserves credit for, is they're pushing for private sector partners in this. You think about all the land records that exist in here, there's real benefits to real estate brokers. So having them as members, there could be financial offsets that come from that and benefit to those companies as well. So that's another direction we're looking to go. And one of those partners already is the Next Gen with the work that we're doing with the police software. And we're looking to continue to build on that over time. As mentioned before, no cost to Monroe for all the work done to date. As one reference point, I live in the town of Newtown. Newtown has had in the past as many as two full-time people working in G I S just for the town of Newtown. Now, they tried to go it alone early on because, you know, there's, you can see there's a lot of benefit here. But in doing it as a town by yourself, it's horribly inefficient. And quite honestly, I look at what they have up online, it's not as nice as ours. So having a consortium of programs.
Just so you know too, those of you who've been in council for a long time, this was in and out of budget for a long time, take out, left out. Even though it's no cost for now, the other towns that had it have full staffs. Bridgeport has like forty people, Stratford has a bunch, Trumbull has a few, Newtown has two. We're doing this all with our own staff, so as best cost efficient as we possibly get with all these benefits.
So related to that, looking forward, there are some costs that are going to start to come our way. So I wanted to give you an overview of that before we get into budget season, so you have some understanding for the context of what kind of costs would be involved. Base contribution of sixty-one hundred dollars is for the software, the web hosting and the viewer, which is the actual way to interface with the data. And parcel updates, this is a really important piece relative to what Steve was just saying. A number of towns have staff specifically for doing these parcel updates. That information is critical. Again, as mentioned before, if we don't have that information being updated, if we have this new condo complex with fifteen units, if it's not evident on the map, we don't benefit from this real time reporting. So rather than doing that in-house, it would be done by G B R C. So the cost for that is really quite reasonable at thirty-eight hundred dollars. Staffing, sixty-four hundred. This is Brian D'Adoli's salary, it's Mark Getz's salary. Brian, you may recall, has been here in the past to talk to, from G B R C. Has done a lot of great work with the grants that are paid for this so far, continues to work with the state and also is working on those partnerships with other organizations. Mark Getz is the software developer who's written all the code to date that's made this thing come alive. So again, for sixty-four hundred dollars to the town of Monroe, it's really a pretty, pretty good bargain. Total cost is what we're looking at for 2016, seventeen is sixteen, three ninety-five. And what Brian's telling me, that that's a worst case scenario. If he can get these other partners to come on board, like other realtors, get Aquarian to be a financial partners while sharing data, EverSource, et cetera, that he's really hopefully can continue to whittle that down over time. But again, wanted to make you aware of what's going on, potential costs going forward. So what are we doing next? Continued development of the parcel updates. We're going to continue work on the emergency operations pilot. And again, Monroe staff have been really the ones pushing this forward within G B R C. Mike Click has been wonderful. Our land use group has been great about working closely with the G B R C staff. They've come here many times to work with us and continuing to develop the offerings within G I S. Some of the other things we're looking at is online permitting. We're hoping to do that over time where residents wouldn't have to come to Town Hall and walk through various departments to get permits and building permit. We're hoping to be able to make some of that available online over time, where you can do that process at home, upload what you need, access what you need to be able to do that. Vehicle location, as mentioned, the new D P W trucks are shipping now with those data points already in them. We have the software there. The next part would be the connectivity of the software and the trucks. And then G B R C, continue to work with the partners to help with the spending across and continue to expand on what's available. Any questions?
Not for me, thank you very much for that presentation. Mr. Caskin, unless you have a question?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I'm computer challenged, number one. I do have a couple of questions. The regional council is funding all of this through these various funds coming in. What happens if that rises up and the town would have to then pick up some of that? Is that correct?
That, that is correct, you know.
Not that I'm against it.
Right, no, 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 that's a good question, though. I mean, you know, there's two sides to it. G B R C being there is the reason why the funds have come in.
Right.
We wouldn't be able to do this as a town.
And the town has been for a long, long time wanting and really needing a G I S system in this town. So I understand that. Will the regional council train our people?
They already have. Matter of fact, we've had two training dates. One was run at Fairfield University and we sent town staff there. They did a really good job with initial training.
And if they have problems with the G I S and so forth, the regional council will step in?
They will, and we've, our internal IT department's been supporting a lot of that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments or questions, Tori, Mr. Callag?
Again, thank you for that great presentation. I was just curious how the cost sharing they had up there earlier in different municipalities, is that strictly a per capita formula or is there a user license equation of layers?
My understanding is it's per capita. And if you look at that, it's, the only town that's smaller is being charged less is Easton.
Okay, thank you. And for the emergency operations purposes, I presume that all this is predicated on the internet connection being available and cellular connections?
It is, and it's interesting, the only connections we were left with during Sandy was cell. So the good thing, the good thing about that is.
Vehicle locations.
Right, and also in terms of accessing this information, ultimately it'd be smartphones or tablets.
Just so I go to, again, Easton and Monroe, the only towns that don't have full-time staff dedicated just to this. So that's on top of what they already, I'm talking about budget cuts, where they could, this could actually lessen their, their impact if they send some of their people out. We don't have those people, we have G R T C.
Any further comments, discussion?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Great, Mr. Xamory.
Thank you.
Thorough presentation.
And we can see movies on the Chromebooks, I guess.
If you want. G is a repeat of D, so we'll skip G. H Clerical Union Contract, Monroe Chapter one thirty-six dash one, Local one thirty-six, I F P T. Is the cause of this?
Yep, I move to approve the Clerical Union Tendative Agreement between Town of Monroe and Monroe Chapter one thirty-six dash one, Local one thirty-six, I F P T. Subject to the following amendments, Articles fourteen dash zero two nine.
And what's with those amendments? Those are adding the terms of?
You had that.
It's adding, it's adding, adding the word current.
Current.
Prior to the two positions that are referenced, so that.
Exactly, thank you.
It only implies that you're current staff.
So instead of the clause to, plus the current's there.
So it will be the addition of the word current for.
Administrator.
So it'll, Sub nine, Mr., Mr. Sub nine will be the current health department administrator assistant and current library replacement. I'll give you a copy of the text. Motion by Mr. Bellis, is there a second? Second by Mr. Callag. Discussion, for the record, we had a non-meeting prior to our meeting this evening where the town labor council, David Ryan, did discuss with us these agreements. So we were fully informed. Does anybody wish to have any discussion in this public? Seeing none, all those in favor of this contract? Yes. Motion carries nine to zero. Our last item is I Supervisor's Union Contract, Local eight one eight, O M Council Number four, A F S C N. Mr. Bellis?
I move to approve the Supervisor's Union Tendative Agreement between Town of Monroe and Local eight one eight, Council Number four, A F S C N.
Motion by Mr. Bellis, is there a second? Second by this time. Discussion, again, again, as you said, turned around to discuss this with us in a non-meeting prior to our full council meeting. Anyone who wishes to discuss this publicly? Seeing none, all those in favor? Against, motion carries nine to zero. Is there any action there in favor? Motion carries nine to zero. Moving on to second, public participation. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in this second public participation? Paul Moise, thirty-seven, Main Pool Drive.
I was asked just over a year ago to become a member of the Trumbull Monroe Health District, the board of directors, I should say, just over a year, probably fourteen, fifteen months ago. Approved by Town Council to be a member of that board. Within a short period of time, probably nine months after that, I'm a healthcare provider. joining the Board of Healthcare Providers. I was informed that the board may be dissolved, the district may dissolve. Thrown into a much different, much different role. And here I'm looking to serve the community in a public health, public service capacity. Now I'm asked to be involved in the legal doings of dissolving a board. I proposed to the first electman when I heard that, that I wished to no longer be a member of the board. He asked me to stay, to see this through, to have it completely resolved. I agreed to do that, I wish I'd known what it's going to involve at that point. I'm a volunteer, get paid nothing for this, have no higher political aspirations, and basically, we've been dragged through a very difficult situation for the last six months. Not only have we not got support from the town, the towns, they did not keep up their part of providing the funding for the fourth quarter last year. If the towns had provided the budgeted funding for the fourth quarter for the health district, I would not be here tonight. The board would have been dissolved. None of us wish to carry this on any further than it is being carried on. But basically, we're being treated as, I like to say, second-class, third-class citizens, I think, dragged through the mud with all of this, involved in something very political. I'm not a political individual. I have no higher political aspirations. 30 years of commitment to the town. I've been involved in public service in the town of Monroe for the past 30 years. Very strong commitment to the town. My kids have gone through the school systems here. But basically, we're put in a very difficult situation. When we were asked to dissolve the board, we remember there were three main debts that we had to resolve before we could dissolve the board. We cannot cease to exist as a board until all of those debts are taken care of. But the funding is not there. If the funding were given for the fourth quarter, that would be budgeted by the towns. Legal obligation to that, we would be out of there. We would not be a part of that anymore. Those three debts, we negotiated down in good faith. I think we did a very good job negotiating those debts down to a point where it was very reasonable for us to satisfy those debts. By the way, none of those debts were incurred by any... Majority of the board members right now were not there when those debts were incurred. So, we're trying to resolve debts that were created before our time. Not that they're bad debts or they were wrongfully done in any way, in my opinion. By the way, I'm representing myself tonight too, not the health district. This is I'm speaking as a citizen of Monroe. I just can't believe how this is being carried out, and I don't see a solution for this. I don't know why we're still attending meetings down there because, basically, we are stuck. TD Bank has a lead on the property, so we cannot empty the office. We cannot get rid of anything. We have to, basically, clean up the office. I don't know who's going to do that. The staff has been let go. So, I don't know who's going to clean out that office so that we can get out of the rent that is due each month. So, we were told that we're keeping the office for our meetings. No, the office is full of things that have to be disposed in this environment. This is 11 years that these things have accumulated down there.